Welcome to the meeting today, and this one especially. So we'll get through that one, I think, in the next half an hour or so. Can I ask you, please, to make sure your mobile phones are turned off or on mute? And can I remind you that if the far alarm does go, we have to nip outside into the assembly point by the great hall. Can I also welcome Honorary Alderman Keith Chapman to the meeting. Welcome. First item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Are there any apologies, please? Can we see the screen? There you are. Those are the apologies. Are there any more from the chamber? No, thank you very much. Item two is the declarations of interest. I won't read the whole interesting of this particular meeting, but you're all familiar with that. If you have any interest to disclose, then you should do so at the relevant point. Item three is the minutes on page three and four, which is the meeting that was held on the 28th of November 2024. I presume all those here are in favour of those minutes. Agreed. Thank you. Those will be signed electronically. We then get to item four. That's honorary alderman. And I would like you, please, to consider conferring the title of honorary alderman on former county councillors Adrian Collett and Rob Humby. Basically, Adrian is here in the chamber, and I'm going to invite the leader of the council to do a report on this award. The leader, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Adrian. Good to see you back again. Thank you, Chairman. I'm delighted to propose conferring the title of honorary alderman on to two former county councillors, who I'm sure you would agree have demonstrated eminent service to the county council. Rob Humby between 2013 and 2024, and Adrian Collett remarkably between 1983. It was before I was doing my O levels even. And 2025. Now, I thought I'd just say a few words, just to talk about honorary alderman. So honorary aldermen and women like mayors, and indeed the chairman of councils, are the civic glue that tie our county together. The word alderman comes from the Anglo-Saxon 'elderman', meaning 'elder man'. And while I won't speculate on how many of our current councillors qualify by age alone, I will say that the title has always carried a certain gravitas. Originally, these eldermen were appointed by kings to keep order in the shires. Yeah, they were judges, administrators, and military leaders. Fast forward a few centuries, and they became the wise heads of borough councils, elected not by the public but by their fellow councillors, a bit like being voted most likely to survive a budget meeting. But in 1972, the Local Government Act swept through like a spring clean, and the formal role of alderman was abolished in most places, except, in fact, in the city of London. Yet the spirit of the alderman lives on, especially here in Hampshire, where we honour our most distinguished former councillors with that title. And I'm delighted that we've now removed much of the subjectivity of the decision as to whether to appoint alderman from our process, thanks to the cooperation of Keith and of Kim and of Andy. So we've now agreed objective criteria, which both Adrian and Rob clearly meet. These honorary titles are not handed out lightly. They require years of service, dedication, and, let's be honest, surviving countless hours of scrutiny panels, budget meetings, and the occasional hated debate, possibly over potholes. But no longer. Honorary aldermen don't vote, don't speak for the council, and don't have to read the full budget report anymore, which frankly might be the greatest benefit of all. But they do represent the best of public service, and they continue to support civic life with wisdom, warmth, and a touch of nostalgia. They are very much the glue that binds us all. So let's celebrate adding two further aldermen to our cohort, two former councillors who absolutely deserve the accolade, not just for what they've done, but for reminding us that public service at its best is about dedication, dignity, and duty, and surviving many hours of meetings. Mr. Chairman, I'm very happy to move the recommendation.
Right. Thank you, leader. May I now invite councillor House to support the nomination of Adrian Collett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm very, very happy to support the nomination of Adrian to be an alderman, and indeed Rob too a little bit later, and to say a few words about Adrian. It's quite actually hard to say a few words about Adrian, given his length of service. I've known Adrian for over 40 years. I suspect the first time we met Adrian, my guess, it was probably the 1984 European elections. Remember European elections? They were fun, weren't they? But that was a very long time ago. And in fact, doing some research, aided and abetted by Adrian and his wife Pam, realised that Adrian actually has been a councillor for over 100 years. Of course, he's done that by accumulating services on this council and on Hart District Council and on Blackwater and Hawley Town Council and Yateley Town Council. And that's even before you start adding in years on the Police Authority and things like that. So Adrian is a genuine centenaryian in our presence this morning. And I have to say, he doesn't really look much older than he did 40 years ago when I first met him. And I don't know where he gets this exuber of youth from. It's the kind of thing you see sometimes on television screens, but you don't bump into it very often. But Adrian's got it. Adrian was elected here, as has already been said, 42 years ago, in 1983. And 1983 was a very different world from the world of today, wasn't it? Just remember, we had this left-wing pro-European Prime Minister, Margaret Thatcher, far too left-wing to be in the Tory party these days. We had Michael Foot handing over the leadership of the Labour Party to this young Welsh firebrand, Neil Killick. And it was the time of the SDP. Remember David Owen? He had that little puppet in his pocket, didn't he? David Steele. Oh, no, that was Spitting Image, wasn't it? But 1983 was a very long time ago, and things were very different. And this council was a very different place in 1983. And I certainly remember bits of it, nowhere near as many as Adrian can. But remember, Southampton and Portsmouth were part of our county council in those days. And there were a lot more councillors packed into this chamber to accommodate the members from Southampton and Portsmouth. And in those days, we delivered lots of youth services. We delivered lots of arts. We opened museums. And there's a rumour, I'm not sure it's been proved, but in those days, we even used to repair roads. A very, very different era from the one of today. Adrian's service genuinely is legendary. A lot of what Adrian did was actually a bit behind the scenes, and perhaps less visible than some of the roles we put up, such as leader nowadays, or chairman of policy and resources, as it would have been back in that era. And so for many years, 26 years, on the Hampshire Police Authority, at the point when we were the police authority, not a solitary elected person meant to cover the whole role. We were the police authority, and we saw it as part of public protection alongside fire services. And Adrian had a major role in the police authority over that long period of time. He chaired the Finance Committee of the Hampshire Police Authority, and helped build police numbers to over 7,000 full-time equivalents, and was key part to introducing neighbour policing and PCSOs right the way across the county in a way which, some of that we take for granted, some of it's been degraded over the years through cuts. But that era laid the foundation stones for some of this policing activity. Adrian then went on to continue to support policing with support work for the Police Training College, which I know he valued immensely for a number of years too. His other roles here were things like the Roads and Development Committee. We had such sexy names for committees, didn't we, through that area? But on the Roads and Development Committee, which Adrian shared between 1993 and 1997, oversaw planning applications, and that was part of what enabled Project Integra to get going. And that was an era when we led the country in terms of our recycling rates, how things, again, have changed over the intervening years. So lots of change. Adrian was part of securing European Union funding. We've only had the opportunity to do that nowadays. So lots of things that we were able to do then that we can't do now. But actually, Adrian's quiet determination, often in the background, often sometimes the quiet man, but also equally able to stand up here and deliver a passion when it mattered, on things that really, really mattered to this county, is something which I think we can all celebrate and enjoy. I've been really proud to have served with Adrian through the latter part of his time on the county council. There are lots of members here who go back further than me, such as councillor Chegwin, who no doubt will say something in a moment or two, with some more useful anecdotes from times past. Adrian, you've been a fantastic stalwart for all of Hampshire. I know a lot of that time was also vested in your local community in Yateley and in Hart. I know that colleagues from those places are equally keen to say how supportive you were of them and how important you were to those communities. We are one community in Hampshire. You've demonstrated that for over 40 years, which is a remarkable, remarkable turn of events. So thank you, Adrian, and enjoy your retirement with Pam and your family. You've earned it. But do keep coming back from time to time and give me some of that wisdom that you injected into this council chamber. Happy to support the motion, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor House. What I'll do now is I'll call councillor Mans to speak in support of councillor, or ex-councillor, Rob Humby.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. First of all, may I associate the remarks made about Adrian Collett that Keith House, councillor Keith House, has just made. I entirely support what he said. And indeed, I note that I first stood to be a district councillor successfully in 1983, the same year as Adrian joined this illustrious council here in Hampshire. But I'm here to support the recommendation that former councillor Rob Humby becomes a honorary alderman. As many of you know, Rob was a former leader of Winchester City Council before he became a councillor, county councillor, here in Hampshire in 2013. More importantly, as far as I'm concerned, I served with him as a fellow cabinet member for a number of years under councillor Roy Perry when he was leader. And specifically, when I became leader in 2019, he became my deputy. And a loyal and very good deputy he was, particularly during the Covid pandemic. We were working then in a very different way. It's very easy to look back on the mistakes that may or may not have been made by central government during those years. But at the time, we were all in the dark as to which way that pandemic was going to go. And I think it was very important that we had a united team at the top of the council, which we did. Rob was a huge support to me throughout those four years that I was leader, three years that I was leader. And I don't think without him we could have got through the pandemic as relatively well as we did. So I would like to thank Rob personally for all the support he gave me during that particular time. And I would add that I think he's a very worthy recipient of the title of honorary alderman. And it's my pleasure to recommend him to be one for this great county of Hampshire. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Mans. As this is a normal council meeting, I'm going to ask if there are any questions from the members. No, I see none. In which case, then we go straight into debate. And anyone else who wished to say anything in support of either Adrian Collett or Rob Humby, you now have a chance to say your words.
I'll be very brief, because I'm conscious of a short meeting. Adrian and I go back long before he was even a county councillor. It's that long, about 47 years. I vaguely recall, I think we first met on a roadside verge in High Wickham at about 1.30 in the morning, and I was driving along, minding my own business. And I saw this lanky youth halfway up a lamppost, as I recall, not pulling down Reform UK flags, but removing a Conservative poster board. That was my introduction to Adrian. There was a parliamentary by-election on. I was the Liberal agent. We got about 5%, which was good in those days for the Liberals. And I met Adrian. We've known each other ever since, 47 years. We've been up Scottish mountains together. I haven't been airlifted off one yet like Adrian was. I've got that to come. But in all that time, we've served on God knows how many committees here, and how much time we've spent in meetings and chamber. I think Adrian has always had the respect across all parties in this council, and that's a rare thing, something some of us, councillor House and myself, only aspire to. But Adrian has always spoken honestly and been respected. And so too has Rob Humby. And I would just say with Rob as well, before he was leader, he and I worked together saving on the quiet Winchester Theatre Hall, which was threatened by spending cuts, not just from this council but Arts Councils elsewhere. I found him a very approachable man. And again, before he became leader, and seemed to have the weight of the world on his shoulders, as all leaders do, he actually was prepared to work across party lines quietly behind the scenes to achieve something which both of us felt strongly on. It is good that we can honour people who have given great service, almost a lifetime service in Adrian's case, in this way and across party lines. And I think thank you to the Conservative group for being willing to nominate Adrian, and I'm sure will support Rob as well. It's a good thing. I hope we see him back, because I don't see much of Adrian these days, almost expected to see him just in front of me again here and standing up and speaking on roads or whatever. But it's a good day, and it's nice when we can just say thank you to past colleagues. I look at some of the other aldermen we've had over the years. Some still turn up. I thankfully can't see who's here, but some do still turn up here. I hope Adrian will as well. You can remove the man from the council. You can't so easily remove the councillor from the man. And I know Adrian will continue to have a great interest in everything we do. Delighted to support both nominations.
Thank you, councillor. I call councillor Bailey, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few words from one of the newer members about councillor Collett, who was the longest-serving member until May. I had the privilege for 25 years to have Adrian as my county councillor. And it was through Adrian that I first was encouraged to get involved, initially at parish council level and then at district council level, where in addition to all that Adrian did in this council, Adrian was always very effective and very encouraging, and had the same respect with other councillors. Councillor House has spoken eloquently about everything that Adrian has done in achieving things as a member of this council. I just wanted to say a few words about the respect that he had locally in the way that he championed residents' needs and the way that he looked after his casework. He is a very hard act to follow as the new member for the division, because everybody I see is always asking me, how's Adrian? Because over the years, they've had interaction with Adrian, and their expectation is that Adrian was able to solve that, so you should be able to do it as well. So I don't know councillor Humby, but from everything I've heard, I'm very happy to support that nomination as well. And wish Adrian well. He is still very involved locally, and I think that's part of his DNA. So he will have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bailey. I call councillor Glenn, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I can see that the list has grown since I put my name down. That's because all the people who are going to be speaking are from, used to be, or are still on Hart District Council, where I first met Adrian in 1991. I was a new boy then, and I was constantly amazed by this member of the opposition, who used to get up all the time, and he would spend hours basically going over the agenda, talking about punctuation, talking about grammar, and spelling. It was quite extraordinary. He really did preparatory work on the agendas. And I thought, is this what local government's all about? And I remember going up to him and saying, you know, Adrian, it's nice to meet you. Every time you get up to speak, I find myself agreeing with you. And all he could say at that point is, well, it looks like the Conservative group have just improved their gene pool. So I get up to say, thank you very much, Adrian, for all your hard work. It's been a pleasure working with you on both councils. You've always been somebody that you can approach and get advice from, regardless of party differences. And I'd like to wish you and Pam all the very best in the future.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Forster, please.
Thank you, Chair. Nice hearing those comments. I see both Adrian and Rob as friends, and that will remain. Rob demonstrated dedication, integrity, and commitment to the public good. I, and I'm sure most of us, will miss him. And some of his lovely phrases, such as, Hampshire is a great place to live, work, and play. And study. That got added later. And his 400 years of family history, which is ongoing. Bit of a cliche sometimes, but he genuinely believes those. And I think they're really fundamental to the way he delivered for residents. It's nice that Adrian is still involved in the community. He came along to a parish meeting just the other day, despite no longer being county councillor. And I think that's really reassuring. We may not see eye to eye on politics, but we do about serving the community. But we've got different ways. But we've got different ways or views of how to do that, and that's a good thing. It keeps us each on our toes, and I know that Stuart's going to take that legacy forward. Some of the historic decisions that councillors have made affect us on an ongoing basis. I'm just a rookie, I've only been here for a few years. But all of us welcome the fact that Rob and Adrian are both going to be honorary aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Forster. Can I now ask for councillor Davies to speak?
Thank you, chairman. I just briefly wanted to say a few words about Adrian Collett. Obviously, we share very little in common politically, but we both share the fact that we represent, in my case, or represented in Adrian's case, a large chunk of North East Hampshire. And in fact, a surprisingly large amount of my division within Yateley has previously at one point or another been part of Adrian's patch. And it's extraordinary how, in that area, it's a tribute to the fact of his performance as a representative of the community, that lots of people in my patch say, oh, well, Adrian will deal with that. And I'd say with courtesy to them that, actually, Adrian isn't your councillor anymore. Oh, when did that happen? I say, well, several years ago. I've known Adrian both on Hart District Council and also on this council. I've known Adrian as a representative on Yateley Town Council, because it's a council that I also regularly attend. Fairly good chap, and I think, you know, this council will miss him. And that's in no way a reflection on the courtesy that I feel towards his successor, councillor Bailey. But I think he's a man who we will miss, and I think it's thoroughly right and proper that we grant him the honorary aldermanship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Can I call councillor Carpenter, please?
Thank you, chairman. First of all, congratulations to Adrian. I don't know you personally, Adrian, very well, but you've always been a real gentleman and a very eloquent and thoughtful speaker, so I just wanted to say that. Rob Humby, I was Rob's whip and group manager, excuse me, under both the times when he was deputy and leader. I could tell you, he was early in every single day, you could say he was actually married to the job, and I probably saw that more than most, maybe Roz as well would know these things as well. But he absolutely loved Hampshire, and everything he did was for the people of Hampshire. He also loved the wheeling and the dealing in the nicest possible way, but that was Rob, he just loved that part of his role, talking to the leaders of other councils, and he just loved all that sort of action, if you like. He had some very serious issues to deal with, as Keith mentioned, but we also had a lot of fun during those times. He told a lot of terrible jokes, some which I cannot possibly repeat, but they were great jokes. He also was a very musical person and loved playing the piano, and I thought that was something that not many people knew, and it was a real pleasure to work with him. So thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Councillor Crawford, please.
Thank you, chairman. I would first say that I first became aware of councillor Collett in 1981, when actually I was elected to Hampshire County Council for the first time. It was a short period, because family commitment and so on, family changes meant that I couldn't continue. But I think that I broke the Conservative domination in Farnborough, and that may have inspired Adrian when he stood in 1983. But there we are. More recently, I came across Adrian as having an affinity with a particular property in my division, number one Eastern Road. And that is now looking very smart now, because it's been refurbished and it's been re-inhabited. But it was a problem of some concern for Adrian, because it was being allowed to become dilapidated and run down. Anyway, unlike the rest of Eastern Road, which our current leader will recall, I visited with him early on his period when he became responsible for highways, to encourage him to refurbish it and sort out the issues there, the flooding, the potholes and the parking. Unfortunately, those problems continue, but we live in hope. So that's that. The other aspect of Adrian's commitment has been that, for many, many years, well, for as long as I can remember, he was the parliamentary candidate for Aldershot, and he did exceptionally well in maintaining second place. And that was, we would always recognise that in those days, he beat Labour into third place. Of course, things have changed since then, and there we are. But I've always appreciated on arriving at Hampshire County Council's Adrian's commitment to cross-party activities and his open-mindedness in discussing any issue on that basis. So thank you very much, Adrian. I would then like to support councillor Humby, because I really was inspired by him in a way, over as has just been mentioned, his love for the whole of Hampshire. Because I've always had that feeling that that's what's really important in Hampshire, partly because as a schoolboy, I represented Hampshire, and so I became aware of the extent of the county and what it meant to be associated with Hampshire. But what I really liked about Rob was the way that he brought together in a spirit of discussion with our Labour group. He would meet with councillor Chad and our Labour group and find out what we were concerned about, and would want to see what could be done to address those issues. And that's most important in cross-party activity. And in that respect, I really appreciated support for the one all-party motion that I attempted to bring to this council on climate change. And as a result of that, it was passed, I believe unanimously by the council, and that's one thing I will credit Rob for. And so I would strongly support his election to be alderman. Thank you very much, chair.
Thank you, councillor. And I call councillor Warwick, please.
Yes, thank you, chairman. We had a phone call this morning from councillor Joy, who very sadly can't be with us today, but he wanted to pass on his very best wishes and congratulations to both you, Adrian, and to Rob Humby. And I would also like to extend my own best wishes to you both. You and I, Adrian, worked together on the Police and Crime Panel before I was a county councillor, and you were a great example of being non-political but being very dedicated. So thank you for that. And to Rob, I worked for many years alongside him at Winchester City Council, where his other catchphrase was joining up the dots, and I still say that to this day. So congratulations to you both, thank you.
Right, thank you. That, I think, brings us to the end of the debate. Can I just add very briefly that Adrian was leader when I joined this council back in 2005? And he was competent, professional and passionate, and that, I think, epitomised not only this council but my own political life as well. So thank you for that personal influence on me, Adrian. Can I also say that, many of you know, I taught Rob Humby between 1973 and 1976 during his O levels. And at that time, we had large classes, we had 32 in each class, and I had to teach all the fifth year, it was very hard work. And there was a chap in the middle at the back who always had a surrounding group of friends, always laughing and joking throughout the lessons. It was very hard work, I promise you. But he was the epitome of warmth and humour. And when he became leader, he'd walk down the corridor or in the main building and see me coming towards him, and he'd say, hello, sir! Exactly as it had done back in 1976. So again, I congratulate him on his vision. What I'll do now is I'll recommend the recommendation to you, which is to confirm the conferring of the title of honorary alderman on former county councillors Adrian Collett and Rob Humby. All those in favour, please show. That is absolutely unanimous, I think. Anyone against? Any abstentions? No? Okay, so that now is agreed. What we'll now do is present certificates, and I will come down from the chair, and we'll do certificates down here, and then have a photograph taken. And then Adrian would like to say a few words to us, if you don't mind. So we've arranged that, and he'll go over there to the lectern. Okay.
Yes, it is, it is. Well, thank you all very much for this tremendous honour. It really is humbling to hear the comments that people have made this morning and reminding me of certain things, and also told me people's perspectives of me that I wasn't necessarily aware of. So thank you all for those very kind comments. And I ought to, before I say anything else, congratulate Mark on your election as chair of the council, richly deserved, and it's the first opportunity I've had to say so. And I'm sorry that Rob Humby can't be here again, sorry, as well today. I agree with all the comments that have been made about Rob, he was a pleasure to work with, and I wish him all the best for the future. I'm not absolutely clear what the privileges are that come with being an honorary alderman, but I have been told, and I asked the officers to confirm, that it does give me the right to drive my flock of sheep through the leader's office whenever he's naughty. So I'll be seeking clarification on that later on. But Hampshire has always been my home, I was born here, and councillor Crawford mentioned the house. I and my sister, who's in the gallery, and the rest of our family grew up in Eastern Road in Aldershot. It's interesting, it's an old farmhouse, it's one of the original farms that was there before Aldershot became a military town. And when I was about eight years old, I asked my father, how old is the house? And he said, we think it's probably about 400 years. I was impressed, I was impressed. And then about six years later, a friend of mine said to me, well, how old is the house you live in? I said, well, I'm pretty sure it's about 406 years. The naivety of a teenager. But there have been many changes over the years that I've served on the county council. Many good, some bad, I won't dwell on the bad. But I'd just like to highlight a few of the quite significant changes that we've seen. One is that what we now call care services, used to be known as social services, and not everybody appreciated the importance of them and the reason that those were there. In fact, many people confused it with social security and saw it as something sadly negative, which social security shouldn't be, but that's how it was seen. And that's been a big change, and I think broadly now, people really appreciate the importance of care services for everybody who is supported. Fire and rescue, a big change with fire and rescue to emphasis on prevention rather than just chasing fires and road traffic accidents. They do amazing work now, and of course, they were part of the county council in the first place. Real-time information at bus stops is being gradually spread out on the busy bus routes. I remember standing next to one of the first ones to be introduced in Southampton, when Southampton was part of Hampshire, and I heard the people in the queue saying, these electronic bus timetables, they're much more accurate than the paper ones, aren't they? And I thought, well, good, that shows it's working, that shows it's working, even if it's not fully understood. And waste disposal. We used to have five dirty old incinerators that burnt the waste and filled the air with dioxins. And what didn't get incinerated was putting tips in the ground, rubbish tips, all over many parts of Hampshire. That's all gone, that's all gone. We now have reduce, reuse, recycle, and if you can't recycle, you generate energy from the waste. And I'm delighted that the jigsaw puzzle of food waste is now being completed and adding to that change. Very, very important changes, and there are many others, but I'm conscious of time. I'm sad that the county council's days are numbered. We celebrated the centenary of the council in 1989, and who would have known then that it probably wouldn't get from 100 years to 140? Because that would be 2029, it looks as though we'll be gone by then. Many of you probably won't know that I did spend two years working for West Berkshire Council as an officer. I was a poacher and a gamekeeper at the same time, as a councillor here and an officer there, and I'll let you decide which is which. But I saw, when I was at West Berkshire, two very interesting comparisons. One was how things that West Berkshire struggled with financially were, at that time, not a problem for Hampshire, because we had the economies of scale, the ability to move things around, we were large enough to deal with those issues. I appreciate things are different now. But the other was how West Berkshire could be so much more responsive to local wishes and needs, because they didn't have the problem that if they did something in Newbury, someone in Slough would say, well, why aren't you doing the same for us? They could actually really focus on what their community wanted. So I don't envy you, the local government review debate, and I won't get into that. It's a very difficult time. Councillor Adams King said recently, we all want the best for our community when we stand for election, we just perhaps disagree on what the best is, or disagree on how to achieve it. But fundamentally, certainly all the parties represented in the chamber today, that's what we want. And that's what we're here for. I decided some time ago that I would retire in 2025. When the elections were postponed, that gave me a difficult decision, but I decided I needed to go ahead. I've enjoyed all the years serving Hampshire, but it was the right decision, not just for me and to get on with other things in my life, but also for my family, for Pam, my wife, up in the gallery there, who has supported me absolutely steadfastly through all of those years, through those years of standing for parliament and all the different jobs I've done as a councillor. I couldn't have done it without Pam. And she deserves now to enjoy her retirement, and that's what I want to work on, making sure that we do, and my family as a whole. So thank you again for the honour. I will watch Hampshire County Council very carefully. I may not always make it to the gallery because of distances and so on, but I'll certainly be watching online and seeing what's going on. So now I can hand over the role of father of the house to my good friend Peter Chegwin, and I shall have words with him afterwards for letting out secrets during his speech. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Collett, or I should say alderman Collett, now to get up to date. What I will do now is to formally ask the council to vote on the recommendation that councillor, sorry. We've done that, oh, beg your pardon. You've got to bear in mind that Adrian was a very good teacher, and he always made sure you crossed your t's and dotted your i's, and all I was doing was doing that. Right, the meeting will now end, it's 20 to 11. I'm going to suggest a 10-minute break, and we reconvene with the next council meeting at 10 to 11. Right? In the meantime, we hope that alderman Collett will take his seat in the gallery. In the meantime, we hope that Alderman Collett will take his seat in the gallery. Thank you, and thank you all. The cam or the red car has started. And I was going to welcome Adrian to the meeting. He is coming, but he's not quite up there yet. And we still have the Alderman, Keith Chapman, as well. Right, let's go on to item one on the agenda, which is apologies for absence again. That will be on the screen. Okay, are there any further apologies from the floor? No, I see none, thank you. Declarations of interest. I've been asked to read them this time round. And so therefore, I remind you that if you have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting, you must declare that interest. Have in regard to Part Three, Paragraph 1.5 of the County Council Members' Code of Conduct and leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with Paragraph 1.6 of the code, etc. Right, moving on then to item three. The minutes, which are on pages five to 18 on your hybrids. This is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 17th of July 2025. All those in favour, please show. That's clearly carried. Anyone against or abstaining? No, thank you. Again, those will be signed electronically. Deputations is item four, and there are no deputations at this meeting, which means we move on then to chairman's announcements. And I have a mixture of announcements from Universal Services and other directorates, which I'll just go through quickly, and one or two of my own. I hope I don't bore you too much. First of all, Universal Services reports that Staunton Country Park celebrated two exciting milestones. Firstly, the launch of the new Tramper, an off-road scooter, to help provide more accessible opportunities to explore the country park. And the official opening of the William Stone Gallery in the Old Dairy, with new additions revealing even more about the history of the park. These additions were made possible because of the dedication of the Friends of Staunton Country Park, who led the fundraising efforts to bring the Tramper to life, along with local support from local organisations, including Havant Rotary Club. A special thank, thank you, goes to councillor Jackie Branson, councillor Liz Ferhurst, and the Mayor of Havant, Manasa Faiz, for their continued support and for joining us to officially open the gallery and to launch the Tramper. I also have a report from about Hampshire Forest Partnership, which has collaborated with a local group, or groups in Petersfield, to develop a sub-project aligned with its broader mission to increase tree planting across the region. This initiative focuses specifically on enhancing the urban environment by providing trees for residents' front gardens. The project was delivered in partnership with Petersfield Town Council and Petersfield Climate Action Network, the Tree Council, and community volunteers. The initiative was highly successful, resulting in the planting of nearly 100 trees, an impressive achievement, given the scope was limited to front gardens within a single town. Due to the positive reception and the impact of the project, we are currently exploring opportunities to extend support for the second year. And I hope other settlements in Hampshire will take note as well. Next, the registration department has taken a bold step to produce a Hampshire Ceremonies brochure in-house, thus saving costs, and have gained full creative control of that brochure. Hosting the brochure online with interactive links and the QR-coded leaflets has made it more accessible and provides advertising options for local businesses within the wedding industry. And again, Property Services announces that they have delivered successfully three new primary schools, as noted in last week's full council, and that work is now commenced on the next new school in Hampshire. On the 6th of October, councillor Chadon Forster will attend a frame signing ceremony to mark the early stages of construction of the Luminous Oak Academy located within the Bawley Gardens Development of new homes in Eastleigh. The school is expected to open in the autumn term of 2026 and will become a 125-place facility for children aged eight to 16 years with social, emotional, and mental health needs as part of the Solent Academy Trust. The construction project is being led by HCC's Property Services team, and the building has been designed to be highly energy-efficient, including the use of air-source heat pumps for space heating, and there are solar PV panels for electricity generation. I have some reports of my own to give. I represented the County Council at the New Forest District Council Civic Day, hosted by the Minstert Trust. And I strongly recommend anyone here with grandchildren to visit the Fossey Gardens, which are administered by the trust. Have a very good day out. I've attended the Jane Austen exhibition at the ARC, and I've also attended the 25th anniversary of the Paling Bridge Museum. And on your behalf, I attended the Lord Lieutenant's presentation of the British Empire Medals at Searl's House, including our very own councillor Zoe Huggins. Congratulations, councillor Huggins. And on Tuesday, I had the great pleasure of visiting the home of Hampshire Archives at the Hampshire Record Office, which now has a copy of my family history book, Sons of the Earth, which I like, even if they, I don't know if they're going to enjoy it. I did say have an electronic copy, said, no, we want a hard copy. The head of Hampshire Archives arranged for me to see the whole building, opened in 1992 by Her Majesty the Queen, as I'm sure you all know, and now Grade Two listed. And interestingly, it means that all the storage cupboards in the place can't be replaced because they're part of the listing of the building. And some of them are rather sort of, you know, metal old hats, sort of thing. But there you go, interesting problem to deal with. Paula Crompton and her staff, all of whom I had the pleasure of meeting, are doing an excellent job. The archive and the Hampshire Record Office deserve and need protection in the coming Local Government Review. A hint to all of you, it really is a very worthwhile institution. Right, that completes my announcements. I now will ask the leader if he would like to present his report to you. Leader.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And good morning again, everybody. I'd just like to echo two of your comments there. First of all, to congratulate Zoe. It was brilliant to be alongside the chairman when she received her British Empire Medal from the Lord Lieutenant a couple of weeks ago. And also to see such inspiring people receiving medals alongside her from all over the county and from different parts of the community. And similarly, just to underline that point about local government reorganisation and the records office, there are so many cross-county organisations and services that we run that we must consider when it comes to that point. And not least, coming back to the point of Alderman and the point of how we then begin to, how we understand and continue the tradition that we have. And I'm very glad that Jonathan has agreed to help look after the arrangements for that transition when the time comes to work out how that works. A couple of other people to congratulate are a couple of officers who have been shortlisted for national awards. Congratulations and good luck to the Out of Hours team in our Children's Services Directorate, who have been shortlisted in the Children's Services Team of the Year category at the Social Worker of the Year Awards. The winners will be announced on the 17th of October. And congratulations also to Nicky Court, our specialist Environment Services manager, who has been shortlisted as a finalist for the Lifetime Achievement Award at the 2025 National Biodiversity Network Awards for Wildlife Recording. The winner again will be announced at a special ceremony on the 20th of November in Bristol. Talking about local government reorganisation, Cabinet, as you may have seen, confirmed the submission of our local government reorganisation proposals on Friday morning. So thank you to all of you who attended the council meeting last week. And we have put those forward. The one thing I just wanted to do was to repeat some of the words that I said at the end of that meeting, which I think is important for us to consider as we now take this forward. The decision is out of our hands. We've done our, we've had our debate. We've put forward our different ideas. And now it's for the government to decide. And so we've put forward our best option, one which will ensure the new authorities have the best chance of financial resilience, retaining and improving our excellent services and offering confidence to residents of Hampshire that no matter where they live, in the countryside or in an urban area, a village, a town, or a city, they will be able to understand and engage with the council, their council, and influence what happens in their local area. We have put the people we serve at the heart of our proposal, and not just us, but all of the councils who have put proposals forward. And to them, I promise, while we are here, we will continue to prioritise your care. To our staff, we recognise how hard you work and what excellent service you provide. We will have your back through the uncertain and disruptive time ahead. And to the people of Hampshire, we will work competently and professionally to manage this process, never forgetting it's your money we spend and never forgetting it is you that we serve. And to my fellow leaders, our job is done. And this should no longer be something about which we fall out. Now we need to move forward together with competence, professionalism, and kindness. For we should never forget, this is not about us. It's about the staff for whom we are responsible, the people we serve, and above all, those who rely upon our services most. And you may well have been aware of a vote that was held in the Isle of Wight Council last night about devolution. I am relieved to say that the Isle of Wight decided to proceed with devolution still. It was a little bit of a tricky conversation, I think, that everyone's been having on the island for a while. And I have to say that I don't think that the announcements from Red Funnel on Tuesday necessarily helped that confidence that they had. And for that reason, I recognise the concerns of the many residents and representatives on the island who have worries about how this might work for them. I want to reassure them that I think, I believe strongly that this is the best opportunity for them to ensure that there is fiscal benefit for the island, that they still continue to receive the support that they deserve, and that also it is their absolute best opportunity to have influence over the ferry services upon which they rely. And they will continue to have my support, and I'm sure the support of all of us, in ensuring that that is taken forward for them, because we need better services. We need better ferry services for them. They need to be more responsive. And there is a great deal of uncertainty in the latest deal that has been put forward by Red Funnel and their potential new owners. And so they can rely upon the county council's support throughout if they need it at any point around that. And the final thing I just wanted to talk to you about, and forgive perhaps a moment of self-indulgence, is that the 1st of October marks the beginning of Adoption Awareness Month. And so for me, for us, October 1st means something called Letterbox Day. So I thought I'd just tell you about it for a moment, about something that perhaps you don't know. And I know that a couple of you here might have already read something that I wrote about this. But as required by the court, under the adoption order that we have, every year we have to write a letter, it's called Letterbox, for each of our children. And these letters go first to the adoption service, and from there are passed on not only to birth parents, but also to any member of the birth family who might be interested. And in our case, it goes to grandparents, aunts, uncles, siblings, half-siblings, some in care, some adopted, some still in the birth families. This is something that all adopters have to do. Writing them is never easy. It's emotional work, looking back over the year and seeing how our children have grown, what they've achieved and what they've endured. The challenge is always balance, celebrating progress while protecting anonymity, offering warmth without suggesting intimacy, and avoiding a tone that's so detached it feels cold. Each time, we know that letters' arrival may reopen wounds of loss for the birth family. The result is often something factual, hopefully friendly, but inevitably restrained. And with both of our children once old enough, we've invited them to read and edit the letters. And our son in particular has had some interesting responses to this. The first year, he cut almost everything out. He said, I don't want them to know anything about me. They're not my family anymore. And after much debate, we reached a compromise, but the letter remained sparse. The next year, he took a different approach. He removed anything too personal, but added positive factual details. Being picked for the village football team, singing with the school choir at Christmas, being invited to birthday parties. It felt as though he wanted to prove he was thriving, successful and popular, even if he never said so outright. And later, when asked what he wanted to include, he typed a note of devastating simplicity. I'm alive. I'm happy. I never want to write to you again. Goodbye. He refused to share more. In his words, they'd harmed him. They didn't care about him, and he didn't care about them. He forbade us to write at all. But the adoption order leaves that decision with us until he turns 18. And after long discussions with the adoption team, we agreed on a pared-back letter, a basic list of the year's events, stripped of detail, which he declined even to review. And then last year, I had to write the most difficult letter of all because he's now 18. And so I had to write the final letter. And that in itself was really tricky, because I knew that certainly for a number of years, I doubt very much that he will want to write any of the letters himself. And that's his choice. And there is a simple reason behind part of that choice. Because his anger is rooted in one devastating truth. His birth family have never once replied. And as a consequence of that, the memory box that we keep for the correspondence we receive on both children's behalf remains empty. And so our daughter's story is different. Letters have arrived for her, not only from birth parents, but also from wider family members. They are often written warmly, as though maintaining contact during a temporary separation. Yet the names and terms they use no longer carry any meaning for her. Megan was adopted much younger than Matthew. So she has little interest in nor understanding of the correspondence, even though she's now a teenager. We keep letters and cards carefully in the memory box, saving them for the day she may want to know more. Whether the language will resonate with her then, I cannot say, but at least she will know that nothing was hidden. So we have two children with two very different journeys. Megan's memory box at least has some letters and cards. Our son's remains empty. And he remains hurt and angry and unsurprised. We support him as best we can, without excuses, and without denying the depth of his feelings. But that, at the crux of it, is the challenge that all of us as adoptive parents face. We can't make things better for the children that we adopt. We can help them understand, we can help them with their ongoing life choices, and we can help them as they become valued and productive members of society. But we can't change that past for them. And so I just wanted to say thank you to all of our adopters in Hampshire, because they do a fantastic job, and I know that before them are people who even, to my mind, are even more impressive, who are foster carers. And I know a number of you in this chamber have been foster carers over the years. And the work that you do to enable families like ours to come together and start successfully is incredible. So this Adoption Awareness Month, do please think of adopters. Perhaps look into it in a little bit more detail and think about those people who are adopted, who have adopted, or indeed the families who have given up their children for adoption. Because it is an impact that runs through all of our lives. Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my update. Thank you so much.
Thank you, leader. I move now to item seven, which is questions to Understanding Order 16.11. I will invite councillor Jackie Porter, please, to put her questions to councillor Kirsty North. And of course, Jackie Porter may ask one supplementary for each question. So councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. Just while I'm getting at the questions, I'd just like to say thanks to Nick for that and for his family for sharing that. I have adopted children in my family and have for many years, and it's really hard to find the right way for each individual child because people don't realise that they take on four and realise there are another four hiding in the cupboard. So thank you. This seems quite petty in comparison. However, it's important to our residents who understand that they want to keep safe in their homes. So Neighbourhood Watch and No Cold Calling Zones perform two very different functions to keep a community safe, especially for areas where the vulnerable elderly live. So why does hans.gov.uk website state now that unfortunately we're not able to progress new applications for No Cold Calling Zones at this time? And actually, instead, it says you may want to consider Neighbourhood Watch as an alternative? I don't think it is. Would you like to comment, please?
Right, councillor North?
Thank you, chairman. Thank you councillor Porter for your question. Neighbourhood Watch is a service which supports communities, connects neighbourhoods and helps with volunteer-led crime prevention activities. No cold cooling zones have been supported in the past by Hampshire County Council to enable specific designated areas deemed at risk of doorstep callers and associated criminal activity to collectively decide as a community that they do not want cold callers and for this decision to be publicised via our website, roadside signs and individual resident stickers. In 2021, 2022, a number of non-statutory activities were significantly reduced alongside a reduction of resource, including the team which supported the No Cold Cooling Zones within the county. Whilst Neighbourhood Watch does not directly support the creation of No Cold Cooling Zones, it shares resources aimed at protecting individuals from cold cooling. Trading Standards continues to offer the Buy With Confidence Good Trader Scheme, which we advise residents to use to source Trading Standards-approved businesses that can provide home improvement and other work, avoiding the need to source work from doorstep callers. Hampshire County Council residents can print and display a free door poster which states, "We do not buy goods or services at the door. Please do not cold call", from the Hampshire County Council website. But we should note that whilst individual residents may display signs at their homes indicating they do not want cold callers to call, there is no legislation that prevents cold calling, whether a No Cold Cooling Zone was designated or not.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Porter, do you have any supplementary question?
Yes, I do, then thank you. I tried as an individual not to take through the link that I was sent, but also to try as an individual to try and find that little piece of paper that says, please don't drop on my doorstep. The public continue to be bothered by businesses and tradesmen and others and ask for this protection they believe that others are enjoying because the list of No Cold Cooling Zones is clearly on our website. So will Hampshire County Council continue to support this small but important addition to keep people feeling that they're keeping safe in Hampshire? It's also got a phone number on, I think, to call, so that we can make this an easier process for people to do and for other people to share with them if they're concerned about the safety of someone who is vulnerable.
Thank you. Councillor North?
Thank you councillor Porter. Yes, indeed, as I said, that sticker or card that you can print out can be accessed on Hampshire County Council website. And you may wish to lobby your members of parliament to ensure that legislation is put in to make No Cold Cooling Zones form, to help us with that.
Thank you. Councillor Porter, would you like to give your second question, please?
Thank you. On occasions, planning permission is granted by our regulatory committee, subject to highway improvements or changes. If regulatory planning conditions can't be agreed and therefore satisfied within two years of a decision being made, why was that planning permission still valid?
Councillor North?
Thank you very much councillor Porter for your second question. As you'd expect, here's your very technical answer. For planning applications for new developments, a period to commence the planning permission is provided as a planning condition. This is typically three years, but can be longer or shorter if specified. For planning applications for retrospective planning permission, the permission is deemed already implemented and so is not subject to time period for commencement. If a planning condition is drafted as a pre-commencement condition, then it will need to be discharged before the end of the period specified for commencement. Otherwise, the development is not deemed to have commenced, will lapse and not be capable of lawful implementation. If non-precommencement planning conditions have not been complied with, this does not cause the planning permission to lapse, as it is an enforcement matter. It would not result in a planning permission as a whole being invalid. Some planning applications are resolved to be granted by regulatory committee or officers subject to a legal agreement securing planning obligations. In those cases, the decision notice is not issued until the legal agreement has been completed. Any time period for commencement and therefore compliance with pre-commencement conditions would start from the date the decision notice is issued.
Do you have a supplementary, please, councillor Porter?
I do. I believe that the I believe the statement, once the planning permission is given at regulatory years, that its statement is approved. And that's what it says on the website, although it is subject to conditions. So I understand an investigation has been undertaken by Hampshire County Council to find out how this happens. We have conditions set, but then, or approvals given, but then the 278 team decides that perhaps it wasn't quite right after all. It's happened more than once. Can you tell me what, how and under whose leadership the changes that have been agreed will be made, please?
Councillor North?
I think if you are referring to an application in your patch, councillor Porter, it might be more beneficial if we have a meeting and thrash out what exactly you're concerned about. I've seen one email, which I think this may be referring to, but as you haven't referred to it directly, I think it's probably best that we meet and discuss that further and go through the history of that said application.
Thank you councillor North. That brings us to the end of questions. There are no further matters there. Right, thank you councillor. We now move to part one, matters for decision, and item eight is appointments. And members, this report was published after the main agenda and is being considered as an urgent item due to the need for the council to approve the appointments required. This will be recorded in the minutes. You'll find the report as a supplementary document to the main agenda papers. Right, can I invite the leader to present the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. There are a small number of consequential changes following Stephen's appointment to Cabinet, and so you will find those in the report. So congratulations to Rob and to Jackie, and my thanks to both of them for stepping up, or in Rob's case, moving across to the chairmanship of 2050. And also congratulations to Mike on becoming the vice-chairman of the Universal Services Committee. And my thanks to my colleagues who have then subsequently moved around a little bit to take into account that. There is also, though, I think, a more significant element to this report, which is the governance step that we are taking in confirming for the first time appointments of independent persons to the audit committee. And my thanks to Derek and to Tom for spending the time to interview what were actually an impressive number of people who put themselves forward for those roles. I think Keith was involved as well. Not at the end, okay. But thank you to all of you, because appointment committees are important and spending that time making sure we've got the right people is correct. So colleagues, I move the recommendations and I commend the report to you.
Thank you, leader. Councillor Miller, as chairman of the Audit Committee, do you wish to comment on the appointment of independent members to the committee?
Thank you, Chair. I've got nothing to add. It was a very successful the independent members is going to be a very important make a very important contribution to the Audit Committee in the future when they start in January. I have nothing further to add. It was a good day. Thank you.
Right, thank you councillor. Are there in fact any questions from members of clarification? For clarification? I don't see any. Is there any debate on the matter? And I call for that debate. Is there any debate? Nope, I see none. In which case then I will put the recommendation that's in the supplementary pack for the vote, and we'll go from there. All those in favour, please show. That seems to be unanimous. Anyone against? Any abstentions? I see none. Thank you very much. So that's approved. We now move to our item nine on the agenda, which is the adoption of the Regional Transport Strategy. That's on your main agenda pages 19 to 26. Again, I'll ask the leader, please, to present the report to you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. The Transport for the South East is a body that we've been an active member, of which we've been an active member for a number of years, and it does some excellent work in putting together the plans for transport and for connectivity across the South East region. And I have to say that I think it is to be regretted that the government will be withdrawing funding from it in a couple of years' time. The work that we've undertaken and the most of the heavy lifting on this has been carried out by councillor Baumann, and I'm really sorry I'm really sorry that she is not able to be here this morning because she could speak to this paper much more eloquently than I can and working alongside her colleagues, she's been able to ensure that Hampshire's voice is front and centre of the deliberations that have pulled together this report. So unfortunately, due to a family emergency, Lulu's not here to speak to it. But she sent me a few notes to, to help in explain, to help to explain rather the background to this. So she's been a member of Transport for the South East since appointment fifteen months ago. And it enables discussions about both the southern part of Hampshire with improving rail links, the Isle of Wight and cross-channel ferries and major highways. And in the northern part of the county, with discussions about the Heathrow rail link and all transport improvements such as bus routes linking in with Surrey and Westbarkshire. There's been a working group that has pulled together the report that we are being asked to approve today and Lulu's been an active member of that, along with the executive, her executive member counterparts from Kent, Sussex and Surrey. The revised Regional Transport Strategy and its strategic investment plan will provide a framework for investment in a better integrated and more sustainable transport network in the South East. Transport for the South East has certainly laid the foundations for effective working with partners on shared priorities as plans are developed for devolution and the mayoral authority and its proposed responsibilities. And I think it's to be hoped for that as we move to these combined authorities across much of the South East, that the the collaboration between those bodies continues in the same way that Transport for the South East has operated. We responded to the consultation about this in March, providing broad support for the Giraffe Strategy with some suggestions for improvement. Most of our suggested provisions have been taken into account in the final draft and there are no financial implications for the county. The feedback on the strategy from Hampshire Highways officers was much appreciated by Transport for the South East, as well as support of the Cabinet members when we discussed this on 23rd of September. So in general, we're pleased to see this strategy come forward. You will note that the recommendations, note the outcome of the consultation of which we were part, and also agrees to adopt the Regional Transport Strategy as set out in Appendix A and that Transport for the South East be advised accordingly. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I commend the recommendations to everyone.
Thank you, leader. Are there any questions from members, please, for clarification? No, I see none. In which case then we move on to debate. Is there any debate on the matter? I see councillor Todd and then councillor Wallace. Councillor Todd, please.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. I need to declare a personal but not prejudicial interest as a candidate for the position of Mayor of Hampshire in the Southern, which is referenced in the paper. I will be voting against the adoption of the Regional Transport Strategy put forward by Cabinet and I would ask fellow members to oppose it as well. It's vague, it's unambitious and particularly it's not doing enough for Hampshire. There are things in there that we can all agree with: speeding up the south coast railway line between Portsmouth and Southampton, some ferry improvements, but so much that's missing. No extensions to our rail network such as potential Waterside or Ludgers Hall lines. Nothing for the Bockley Line, a vital connection between the north, middle and southeast of our county. Barely any reference to the West of England Line, which desperately needs improving and electrification. No reference to the new stations and infrastructure needed to support new development, most obviously a new station at Wellborn. Very little for the middle of the county and the north of the county. I have no idea whether that's down to a failure to persuade Transport for the South East or whether we never put forward strong enough proposals in the first place, but it is really striking that the word Kent features fourteen times, Sussex twelve times and Hampshire only three times. It's got a vision, three goals, six principles, five missions and then as far as Hampshire is concerned, no ambition. To support the growth, new jobs, better jobs and better environment that we need, our county has a desperate need for better transport infrastructure, better trains, better buses, better ferries, better cycle routes, better pavements and walking routes, better roads and this strategy could have done so much more to put Hampshire on the path to get them. But particularly as far as our county is concerned, it's failed to do that. The county council is falling desperately short on improving and developing our transport and with this strategy will continue to fall desperately short. It's an opportunity missed, it's not worthy of our support and I believe we should reject it when we vote today.
Thank you councillor. councillor Wallace, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The latest government data shows that there is, that 9.6 billion vehicle miles were travelled on roads in Hampshire in 2024, which is a one and a half percent increase on 2023 and just a fraction below the highest levels ever recorded pre-pandemic. I doubt I'm the only councillor who's regularly contacted by residents about the volume and speed of traffic in our districts. In fact, it's probably the most frequent concern that I hear. So when these reports come out, I always approach them with hope, eager to see how future plans will address the real everyday challenges that our communities face. And the mission statements at the start of this report are frankly excellent. Improving strategic connectivity between major urban areas and international gateways, especially by public transport. Tackling inclusion and integration challenges by providing a joined-up transport network. Decarbonising our surface transport network to meet climate goals. What's not to like? I read on Keen to discover how this strategy will help the gentleman down my road who queues five minutes every morning just to exit his close. How it will help with residents without cars get to hospital. How it will support economic growth in our communities. But the more I read, the more disillusioned I became. Yes, there are encouraging words about working with rail and bus providers, but it's clear that the biggest projects and the bulk of funding are still focused on building more roads. Upgrading junctions and adding lanes to motorways, none of which will help the residents I represent. We know from study after study that building more roads needs to induce demand. More roads encourage more driving, increasing congestion and undermining the very benefits they're meant to deliver. Instead, evidence from around the world shows that traffic can be reduced by redesigning road infrastructure, pedestrianising town centres, investing in frequent reliable bus and rail services and creating safe, accessible walking and cycling routes. In short, if we build it, they will come. If we provide viable alternatives to driving, people will use them. And in doing so, we not only tackle social exclusion and improve connectivity, we also reduce traffic for those who genuinely need to drive. The current system clearly isn't working. Transport has failed to deliver any significant reduction in carbon emissions over the past thirty years. Meanwhile, congestion and social exclusion have worsened, especially with the loss of local bus services. Even with all the promised road capacity increases, congestion is still predicted to get worse. So I ask, what is the point of pursuing a road building policy at huge cost that only delivers a worsening situation? It's time to stop repeating failure. We must move on from outdated twentieth century solutions and explore more efficient, inclusive and sustainable ways to give people access to the services they need to lead fulfilling lives. If even a portion of the funding earmarked for road projects were redirected to walking and cycling infrastructure and to improving bus services, the opportunities could be transformative. I'm sorry to say that for me, this strategy is a missed opportunity. A chance to rethink how we deliver transport in our region and to put people, not just vehicles, at the heart of our planning. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wallace. councillor James, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I started reading the strategy and started switching off because it always starts with those things about we must improve connectivity as if dark forces are out there suggesting we make it harder. We must make our public transport affordable, as if someone's come up with a bright idea of making it unaffordable. And then you get all very parochial on it. And so I looked exactly what's happening in my area and noticed that it's almost like someone started in Kent, worked their way from right to left and got very bored before the end and stopped. Because there's nothing. In recent years, to the southwest of Basingstoke, we've built a number of developments, around two and a half thousand houses and new primary school. We have many down being developed, which is eventually going to be nine thousand houses to the west of Basingstoke, around five thousand of them to the southwest of Basingstoke. And thanks to the local plan changes that were implemented by the current Labour Government, it looks like we're going to have to eventually build around seven thousand houses in Popham to the southwest of Basingstoke. So when we think about that, we're adding an entire Borden to the west of Basingstoke and we're adding another Romsey to the southwest of Basingstoke. Because, as you'll also notice, if you look at further education, higher education, there's a gap. Higher education stops at Winchester and doesn't start again until Reading and it's long been an ambition, a cross-party ambition, that Basingstoke and Dean gets a university. And southwest of Basingstoke, there is an opportunity to provide a university campus, looking particularly at life sciences as it's a site for the new mega hospital, which will be the largest hospital in Hampshire. With all that going on, a hospital, a university, thousands of jobs and around thirty thousand residents, you would have expected it to perhaps get a mention in our transport strategy, but it doesn't. Frustratingly, there is a railway line that goes from Basingstoke to Winchester, the two busiest railway stations in Hampshire, that goes round through the villages of Oakleigh that doesn't have a railway station and the village of Stephington that doesn't have a railway station. If it was one and a half miles lower, it would be able to pick up all those areas of the southwest and protect Basingstoke from all that traffic. It would encourage more to use public transport. It would connect the people of Basingstoke and Dean with better education, better job opportunities. And also connect the people of Winchester to new and improved health facilities without any detriment to Winchester Hospital, which is fantastic and should not lose any services as a result of any hospital development to make absolutely clear, otherwise Martin will hit me. All those things could happen, but instead what we have is a proposal that we could potentially join a direct train line from Basingstoke to Gatwick. I can actually get from Basingstoke to Gatwick already via Clapham Junction quicker than I can get to any railway station in east Hampshire by train, which is amazing. Very much I could be part of my council. But it would save me ten minutes and I welcome that. But given the choice of that ten minute shorter journey when I go on holiday once a year versus changing the lives and improving the lives of thousands of people, I would choose the latter. This strategy just seems totally disconnected to what's actually happening and therefore I cannot support it.
Thank you councillor James. councillor Harrison, please.
Chairman, I very much agree with the three previous speakers. I wasn't going to speak today, but of course, mention of the Waterside Railway line always sets me off, doesn't it? You know, hopefully members will forgive me for being a little bit parochial. But I'm deeply saddened by the fact that Network Rail are allowing the Waterside Railway line to deteriorate. It's not being maintained. It would make a transformative difference to the people that I represent and further down the south Waterside. And this council has always adopted a position of neutrality. We need the MPs and we need the county council, as long as it exists, to get behind it. And then when I think about bus services, and I'm sure this is very much in common with other members, we really have, you know, a situation where the bus companies only look at the profitable routes. They're much less interested in the less profitable rural routes and this is a big issue for Hampshire. And I really don't see anything in the strategy which is going to change this in a way that needs to be done. And when I look at walking and cycling, I've got some examples of really good off-road walking and cycling routes, but they're not connected. They desperately need to be connected. Where is the money going to come from? Where is it in this strategy that is going to deliver so we can do better? And we need to be doing better for the residents of Hampshire, but more especially with elections coming up, Tottenham South and Marchwood. Thank you, Chairman.
Right, thank you councillor Harrison. councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. As I sat reading this, I thought I'm missing something. The missions, the five missions, don't include people at all. They don't include anything other than basically getting a transport network moving, but not actually talking about why we're moving people. So there are five simple points I wanted to point. The impact of logistics on our road network. In Hampshire, we've got ports, we've got, we're on the E1 up to the Midlands. Logistics is a big problem for us and it affects people's quality of life. It affects the transport and the impact on national highways as well. And yet there's nothing about the word logistics in there. Railway services, I think it's all been said actually. Gavin, I completely agree. Move the line slightly and we encourage a lot more other people to catch the train or alternatively have a bus. There's no actual bus between Winchester and Basingstoke because of the train, but there's a lot of places where nobody can catch it on the way. Nothing about disability. Improving transport for the one in six who finds accessibility hard. That would be for me a key if we're talking about getting people back to work, we're getting people to feel comfortable in their workplace. They need to know that they can catch a bus. Even today, looking at a bus stop, the numbers are so small that anybody with any sight problem would not be able to read the numbers on that bus flag. Think about that. And then the large, the last one really is air quality. It's a regional problem rather than local and our director of public health has been really good in putting resources into air quality and thinking about that and I know that some work's going on, but it's not even mentioned in the paper. It's mentioned in the consultation responses, but not in the paper itself. So I'm really sad that actually it doesn't do what it says on the tin. It's not actually a strategic transport plan for the South East. It might be for Kent, but not for Hampshire. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Porter. councillor Donnelly, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'll be supporting this. Purely, and I take on board all the points that you've quite rightly made. I think it's important to note that a strategy isn't the sum total of what we're doing and there's still opportunities to go above and beyond. The Ludgershall branch was mentioned from Andover. That's obviously in my division, but of course it goes into Wiltshire, which isn't in the South East. So the transport strategy for the South East, it's great. But those of us who border Wiltshire Dorset, we're looking at going to the southwest as well. So Hampshire goes both ways. Now, we've got a lot of potential local houses being put in there with the local plan. I imagine most members are in exactly the same position in their divisions and I completely support the reopening of the Waterside line, which I think should have been done yesterday. But I think that this is something going forward that we need to really make sure that when we're talking about local plans and building on the strategy, that we do include this, especially when the new mayoral authority comes because they will be able to attract the kind of investment which can make a lot of these schemes reality. So I think it's a good start, but I do agree there's a long way to go. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. councillor Wade, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Strategies are designed to make things better. Well, my residents in a part of the Waterside don't see any of that from this council. You mentioned the A326 didn't get a lot of the mention in the strategy. But even what we were planning to do doesn't really tick the box. We have an area where there's going to be increased development. Associated British Ports only this week are doing their consultation on how they're going to move their car transporters over to the Waterside. In the New Forest District, we have a hospital called Limington Hospital and we have an aging population. There is no bus route from the Waterside to Limington, apart from one that runs once a week. It's not enough. We had a ferry. Decarbonising, taking people out of cars. We had high ferry. This council, and I've asked many times, has refused to support it in recent, in its current situation. We do not deal with the problem. The bus services are not good enough, the roads are not good enough. We're not really trying hard to get people out of their cars to decarbonise. Because if we get people out of the cars, the roads won't be such a big problem because there won't be so many cars on them. So we're not thinking forward, we're not thinking practically, practically we're not thinking to improve, we're just doing the same old thing. Because if you do the same old thing, you get the same old result. We have to think about change and improvement. We haven't been innovative enough, imaginative enough or really thought what can we do to make a difference. So I can't support it either, Chairman.
Thank you councillor. councillor Rod Cooper, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I recently attended a Blackwater Valley Transport Liaison meeting. And at this meeting, Great Western Railway told us about a pilot scheme that they're going to be operating that is going to run on the North Downs Line, which runs basically from Reading through my patch, through down to Gatwick. At the moment, this service operates a twice hourly service from Reading to Gatwick via Northcamp and through my patch. They are talking about extending it into the night. This is just one example of initiatives that are happening and I think it's extremely important at the moment that we have a seat at the table through this south-east transport group to be able to put our voice. And yes, it might not be perfect in its current form, but I wholly support our membership of this group and it is only the platform for us to make our voice heard. And I also believe that there is an opportunity right now, with the government having taken over South Western Railway, for us to get our voice to the right people through this forum and make our voices heard. Thank you.
councillor, councillor Marge Harvey, please.
Thank you, chairmen. Please excuse me from standing, it's difficult. This is a bit parochial, but for about, I've been in local government now for 30, nearly 31 years. And for all of that time, in my patch, as a ward councillor, we have a railway station. And now in my division, we don't have a railway station except in Rowlands Castle. For all of that time, I've been trying to lobby for a bus that comes through from Hordean to Rowlands Castle, which is only three miles away. Instead of that, we've got a bus that runs into Rowlands Castle, but not from Hordean. From Hordean, you have to go to Waterloo Vale, change buses, go to Havant, change buses, come to Rowlands Castle, when we're three miles up the road. Now we've got 800 houses and maybe another 750 on top, they've given us a bus service. It goes around where the houses are and back into Hordean. I despair trying to get that bus service together with a bus station, with a train station that could serve all of those people and is just absolutely useless. I'm not getting anywhere with it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Harvey. councillor Miller, please.
Thank you, chair. My comments will be brief. When we joined this south-east regional, what's it called, transport strategic, south-east regional group, we had at the time LTP3, we had at the time a Thames and Hampshire County Council Connectivity Board, we had at the time a bus service improvement plan. Not once are these mentioned in these papers. I've read them very, very briefly, I have to be honest, but I could not see them being mentioned. That is why Hampshire seemingly only got two mentions as opposed to the 13 mentions for Kent, which is now in the good hands of the Reform Group and we know what their attitude to transport will be. And also you mentioned Sussex as well. Well, that is another issue. But I have to say, we should be coordinating what we want locally into the plan if it's going to continue. As you mentioned, leader, the plan, as I understand it, is, this will be shelved in two years anyway, so you could say, what's the point in carrying on? I'd just like to comment though, councillor James mentions the situation in Basingstoke. Last night, or night before last, and I saw councillor Porter there as well, I attended a presentation or consultation on the developments they're planning for south-west Basingstoke. It would absolutely astonish councillor Wallace and some of his green and environmental-friendly approach as to what the plans are there. This is just going to bring thousands and thousands of HGV lorries, nothing else, there to service Southampton, Portsmouth and a little bit of Basingstoke perhaps. It will not serve any good purpose at all. It would become the world's biggest solar farm instead. So I'd just like to say, we should be, if we are party to this, we should be incorporating our own local plans. LTP3 went through, LTP4, we heard comments last week at the 2050 meeting, that LTP4 really needs some scrutiny and the scrutiny should then take into consideration what is going on across the south-east England under this regional authority. Thank you, chair.
Thank you councillor Miller. councillor Dunning, please.
Thank you, chairman. I support councillor Wade's comments about the connectivity of the Waterside with Limington Hospital. I don't know if you know, but a railway runs past Limington Hospital and runs within 100 yards of the entrance. What we really need there is a halt. That will give connectivity to Brockenhurst, which is then connected to Southampton, Totten, Bournemouth, et cetera, just for the cost of a halt at the hospital. If that can be done, I think it'd be a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I now see councillor Parker.
Thank you, chairman. I've been listening to this debate with interest and lots of people have stood up and said, what could be done better? And every strategy I've ever seen, there've been things that could have been done better. But we're in danger of losing the good in favour of the perfect. This is not a perfect strategy, I completely buy that. There are lots of things you could do that would be better and I would love that to be the case, but this is a strategy to start us off. Let us get it on the books and let us then work to improve it, both locally, which we can do within Hampshire, and more broadly outside. I would love to see, talking about connectivity with Gatwick, I would love to see a rail connection that connects the Basingstoke to Waterloo Line to the line that goes to Gatwick. They cross over each other. It'd be easy enough, you would have thought, to do a connection between the two. I'd love to see that because then I could get on the train in fleet and get off at Gatwick with my suitcase in my hand and hop in a flight to the sun. But that is not necessarily the highest priority. Let us get this strategy on the books, then let's work with it to make sure we can get what we need. I will be supporting this.
Thank you councillor. And then I have councillor Tree, please.
So again, talking with a bit of a localist feel, my division of White Hill, Borden and Limford feels like a forgotten corner and an isolated island where it comes to public transport with no train station at all. And I think it's important to make the backdrop context here in that only about 500 new homes have been built out of 2,400 with planning permission in a town that was promised to be regenerated after the MOD pulled out. And that's before any additional housing is allocated in a future local plan, taking into account the planning policy framework, increasing east Hampshire housing allocations outside of the South Downs National Park by almost double. We've had, we have had no dedicated rail link bus since the last one was abolished about 15 years ago, ironically before any development began. This is not just about resident travel, whether it's young people wanting to leave the town, working age people, elderly, but it also affects inward investment in terms of encouraging businesses here. And the future skill centre that closed citing ability to attract students from outside of the area as a major issue. Two million pounds of S106 that paid for the relief road could have been spent on other transport initiatives, which I asked about previously in this chamber. Therefore, I know that many of my fellow residents are unhappy with the transport situation. The strategy doesn't solve this, I appreciate it's an overarching document for a much wider area, but I can't see how I can support. I do however want to see White Hill and Borden and Hampshire as a whole, as a whole, a great success and I hope that any strategy that's put in place does actually achieve that. I want to see success and not failure. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tree. Right, I don't see any further speakers, so I'm going to now ask the leader to respond to the debate. Leader, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, I wasn't quite expecting that debate. So I think, thank you to everybody for your contributions. I think there are quite a number of different, quite valid points that have been made there, not least around the connectivity of, and looking at the way by which we connect the new developments that are inevitably coming our way. And one of our challenges at the minute is that so many of them are unplanned as a consequence of the former Deputy Prime Minister and her insistence that we should all be having increased housing targets without any opportunity to implement any strategy or plan around them. And thereby lies much of the problem, if I'm honest with you. And I think the word for many of those contributions I would apply, and many of you used it yourselves, is the word parochial. And this is a regional strategy. So whilst it would be great for us to look at much of the detail of what we're talking about in the debate, it's not necessarily the place for it to be because we're talking about a much wider strategy. And as Stephen rightly said, strategy is something that quite often is good but not perfect and we can all find reasons why we wouldn't be happy with it as a consequence of it not pursuing our pet projects in our own area. And that might be to do with buses in Rowlands Castle and Hordean, Marge, but this would be the perfect forum if you wanted a bus to Chichester, for example, in the same way that Andy has always had an aspiration for a bus to Farnham Station because that's one of the closest stations to White Hill and Borden. The links that we create through this group with Surrey are the important thing, but we shouldn't equally take, no, take, sorry, ignore the work that we've done ourselves. Derek talked about LTP3, we're now talking about LTP4. And I think it's absolutely right that it should be scrutinised by 2050. We're talking about ways, about how that can be managed. But within it, there are many of the different pieces of work that you are talking about here and it's something that is important for us to continue to be alive to and it's something that I think with all of these different strategies, we need to ensure is a living document because as matters change, then it becomes increasingly important that we reflect those as best we can. One of the challenges that we have, that Chris rightly pointed out, is that we are a border. We border the south-west and the artificial lines that were drawn by the regional map that was created when the Labour government implemented it back at the early part of this century, still create an issue for all of us who have divisions that are along those borders because an awful lot of the residents of my area look to Salisbury rather than looking to Winchester or Southampton. But at the end of the day, I don't have any expectation that this strategy is necessarily going to provide the solutions to that because it is something that looks across the entirety of the south-east in a way that enables the connectivity of the entire area. So links to Gatwick, links to Heathrow, those are the things that we should be looking at with this because they will bring prosperity to northern Hampshire. We have equally just completed with the New Forest LC Whip and the Winchester LC Whip, a map that is now complete across the entirety of Hampshire for all of our districts and all of our areas with quite detailed plans about how we improve cycling and walking across each of those areas. So I think it's entirely wrong to suggest that areas are forgotten and indeed, it's entirely wrong to suggest that we should be providing public money to support a private ferry service, despite the fact that we've offered on many occasions to support that with ideas of how they might raise funding for it. But the thing that strikes me most about the debate that we've just had is that it's a brilliant advert for exactly what we've been talking about for the last nine months, indeed, actually for the last 12 months. And that is, it's a great advert for devolution because devolution is what brings increased influence and increased power to our area to deal with many of the issues you've raised. We don't deal with them through a regional body, we deal with them through ensuring that the new combined authority and the mayor and the mayoral candidates, whomsoever they may be, hear the concerns that are raised here about the more parochial issues and find ways by which they can address them once the combined authority is in place and once they have all of the various funding streams in front of them. And don't forget that earlier this year, when the government were talking about a fund of billions to support public transport and interconnectivity between rail services and other public transport services across the country, all of that money went to mayoral authorities. None of it came to us. So that's why devolution is a good thing for us, that's why all of the points that you've just raised are entirely valid, but they are also entirely good adverts for the deal that we have done. It's a very good postscript to the meeting on the Isle of Wight last night and I therefore continue to commend this to you because it's a regional strategy and it's one that helps us deliver on regional ambition. But I hope you will all be lobbying your nearest mayoral candidate, there's one there. Martin is available for conversations with you all after this meeting. Because that is the best way by which we deliver on many of the frustrations that I completely understand and in many cases I share. Mr Chairman, thank you.
Right, thank you, leader. I trust therefore there'll be a shopping list on the new mayor's desk on the 8th of May 2026. Right, we move on then to the recommendations, which are on page 19 of the pack. I won't read them out to you, you've got them all there in front of you. All those in favour, please show. Those against. Right, it's clearly carried, okay. In which case then that is agreed. Moving on then to the next matters, which are part two, matters for information. And we come to item 10, which is the Hampshire and Isle of Wight Foreign Rescue Authority. There have been no questions received on this matter. So we go on then to the report on page 27 and 28. And what I'll do here is to invite the chairman of the authority to address, to present the report. So councillor Vaughan, please.
Thank you, chairman. You have my report. I have nothing to add to it except for Neil Oden, our retiring chief fire officer, has retired last week and we on the authority wish him all luck for what he's done. He has been absolutely brilliant and for the eight and a half years that I've been on the authority, he has been a real joy to work with. Our new chief fire officer is Sabrina Cohen-Hatton, who is absolutely dynamite. She is a tour de force and already I can't keep up. She's really very, very good, so we welcome her to carry on the good work. And secondly, I'm looking forward to the final years passing out parade of full-time firefighters in December, where I sincerely hope that councillor Zoe Huggins will be wearing her British Empire Medal. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Right, thank you very much. I'm not sure dynamite and fire officers get together very well. We'll see, we'll see. I see, we're on questions now to the chairman, so I'll ask a question from councillor Parker.
Thank you, chairman. There are circumstances where dynamite has been used very effectively to extinguish fires, notably when you've got an already explosive situation, but that's another issue. The reason I wanted to say a few words, chairman, is in relation to the new chief fire officer. Dr Sabrina Cohen-Hatton, KFSM, is a remarkable lady. If any of you find yourselves with a teenager saying how life isn't fair and they're never going to get a job, this lady, at the age of 15, whilst at school, was made homeless after the death of her father. And she got her GCSEs and her A-levels whilst homeless and sleeping rough. She joined the local fire service out of school, whereupon she got She joined the local fire service out of school, whereupon she got herself an Open University degree in psychology, she got herself a PhD, she has been everywhere you can think of, including Women's Hour and Desert Island Discs. She is a remarkable lady. Her list of awards and stuff is extraordinary. She's recently done, I think, four years as chief fire officer of Sussex. She's now come to us, the bigger job, and she is going to be an amazing person, a real dynamite, to use that phrase again, role model for all sorts of people, and she will lead the fire service into success. So I'm really happy to see her appointed.
Right, thank you for the illumination, councillor. Are there any further questions for clarification? No, I see none. Is there any debate on the matter? I see no debate. In which case then, oh, sorry. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to ask and to refer to paragraph 1.6 of the report in terms of the funding situation and approaches to government to see whether or not any further funding is available, whether or not there's been any responses to those at all, if I may, if you know. Thank you.
Councillor Vaughan.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. And thank you for helping your MPs in Hampshire to write to the government about the funding. The funding situation with the fire authority, with the fire service is desperate. I mean, we haven't been funded properly for years. Me and the chief fire officer, or chief fire officer and I, have written to the government explaining the situation. We have asked, Portsmouth have written, Southampton have written, you kindly have got your MPs to write. I'm about to write to all of the Conservative MPs to get them to do something, but as yet we have heard nothing. But we live in hope. We will survive this coming year, but the next one was going to be a bit tricky. We are not going to be using our reserves this year, because next year's going to be even harder, we suspect, which is a time when we're really going to need them. Because what I don't want to be is chairman of the Fire Authority and having to close fire stations. That's just not on. Okay?
Thank you, councillor Vaughan. Before I finish, are there any further questions or any further debate? No, I see none. In which case then, we don't have a vote on this one, because it's a matter of information. So I will now close the meeting and thank everyone for their attendance, and thank you too for a very interesting and competently debated meeting. Thank you.